I'm gonna go ahead and use my clock to show six o'clock. Uh, one, call to order and welcome guests. Thank y'all for coming. Two, call of road established accord.
Chairman Clemens.
Here.
Commissioner Watson.
Here.
Commissioner Marchman.
Here.
Our indication, Mr. Clarence Benefield is gonna do our indication and then Bradley Williams is gonna do our pledge.
Let's pray. Father again, Lord, we are thankful for this opportunity, God, to carry on the business of Covin County. Lord, we ask your blessings upon this county. And that all the work, Lord, that's has been done and is going to be done are in citizens and surrounding counties. Lord, we ask you now to be with us in this meeting in a special way, forgive us where we fail. And Father, we ask you now to bless those, Lord, that's in Ukraine, Lord, that's fighting for their lives. For those innocent ones, Lord, that's dying for Russia, Lord, because of the Kremlin. And Father, we ask you, Lord, to forgive us where we come up short. Now be with us in this meeting, for it's in Jesus's name we ask, amen.
Amen.
Attention salute pledge.
Pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
Number three, approve the minutes of January twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-two, meeting, proprorations, extended years, personal actions, payroll, requisitions, and approve all general entries to be posted.
Make most we approve item three.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passed. Number four, any public comments or updates?
I'm Barry Horace, can y'all understand me?
Oh yeah.
We've spelled your name and you'll have thirty minutes.
Okay. I'm Miss Sheila Haynes and I'm a seeker of truth. I sent all of you a letter earlier asking to get rid of our electronic voting machines. I have a packet here that gives the backup information for that. Because I can't get any information out of Alabama, our sunshine laws might as well be non-existent because I could have gotten you better information, but in this packet is information from other states with the exact same machine that we use here in Coleman. There's also studies out of California done on the exact same machine, but you'll see it all in your packet. Grass roots organizations in other states have been successful in gathering that about these machines. I need the time series CBR report to pass on to Travis Smith, who is a national figure working on election integrity. Since I can't get that, I have to come to you guys, I'm sorry it's come down to this. As a matter of fact, Alabama is the only state she can't get that data from. Why? It's because we're not transparent. So Dr. Douglas Frank is another figure on the national scene. He has said that the DS two hundred, which we use, is the most hackable machine in the country. He has, uh, he can predict, excuse me, with a point nine nine four correlation coefficient, the number of people in each age group who voted. And he can get that at the precinct level. This is the number of eighteen-year-olds who voted at the precinct level, the number of ninety-year-olds who voted. Now, if you remember, the correlation coefficient of one means you can predict it with one hundred percent accuracy. A zero means it's random, a negative one means you can predict in the opposite direction. Now, he can predict it with a point nine nine four percent accuracy. I'm not asking you to depend on his figures, we've got Wallace State down the street, they can validate it. After you validate that, I would ask that you would find some alternative to our machines. We can't open up the machines because our contract with the SN says we can't, that makes no sense to me. We would like to vote by paper. You might be worried that that's a logistical nightmare. These figures on the national scene have already worked that out. We can get you information on that if you know that. You have any questions for me? Maybe the packet.
You know, my only question, I guess, is, is, uh, why you can't get the information you're seeking through the Secretary of State?
I can't get to the Secretary of State or our local probate judge, neither one will respond to you, so I don't know. If I had that, I wouldn't do you, honestly.
Thank you so much, Your Honor.
Yes, ma'am.
Do we have any other public comments or updates? We'll move on to number five, new business aid proclamation, child abuse awareness month.
Y'all wanna do a picture first, I know we have several here for child abuse prevention month.
That night I was taking pictures with me.
Can go ahead and read the proclamation for child abuse prevention month. Whereas Coleman County applauds Coleman Caring for Kids for their dedicated work in the prevention of child abuse in our community. And whereas Coleman County commends Coleman Caring for Kids for their tireless promotion of ongoing programs in our community, which are designed to help prevent child abuse. And whereas the Coleman County Commission stands firmly on the side of prevention of any type of abuse and believes no child should endure verbal, emotional, or physical abuse for any reason. And whereas the National Exchange Club adopted the prevention of child abuse at its national project in nineteen seventy-nine in response to a request by its national president, who, as a physician, noticed an increase in abuse cases in his medical practice. Since then, April has been designated as Child Abuse Prevention Month. And Coleman County supports and encourages all of our residents and community leaders to wear blue each Monday in April in observance of Child Abuse Prevention Month. Whereas the Coleman County Commission hereby proclaims the month of April to be Child Abuse Prevention Month. Our commitment is to have healthy, happy children and to help eradicate child abuse in our community and to support the efforts of Coleman Caring for Kids and all others who observe the importance to bring awareness of this tragic problem and to help make our community a stronger and more loving county where children will be able to grow and thrive without fear of harm. Now, therefore be it resolved that Coleman County Commission hereby proclaims the month of April, twenty-twenty-two, to be Child Abuse Prevention Month. Sound this date by Chairman Clemens, Commissioner Watson, and Commissioner Marchman. Thank y'all for all you do.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to motion through.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passed. B, resolution twenty-twenty-two dash thirty-two, adoption twenty-twenty-two division L, phase one, regional hazard mitigation plan.
Commissioners, this is a hazards mitigation plan we had placed for the county and now has been adopted into a regional plan. We did not lose anything when we were adopted, this is actually done probably last year, but they're doing it phases now. This just announces that we are accepting the plan.
Make most we approve item B.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passed. Tim, we appreciate you, Your Honor. C, resolution twenty-twenty-two dash thirty-three, tax abatement for Brothers Concrete Supply LLC in the amount of two million eight eighty-two thirty-six.
Good evening. Uh, as you said, this is a tax abatement for a new company that is forming in unincorporated Coleman County, but it's right by the Dodge City exit, you can actually go up like you're going to the golf course. As you said, the tax abatement is actually only for a hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars over a ten-year period. So what will get out of that is that two-point-eight billion dollar capital investment into their equipment and their new facility. They're also gonna create twenty-two jobs and they're reporting that their pay will average roughly about sixty thousand a year, which is well above our county average. Though this job will create over ten-year period just short of a hundred thousand dollars for our community school education system. Uh, and from the salaries of those jobs, we predict that over that same three-year period where we're abating a hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars, we'll create three-hundred-and-seventy-three hundred thousand dollars. So you can see we're making up that, plus four-hundred-and-four thousand a year in local business revenues from sales to these people as they spend their money in our community.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to motion for the ballot.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passed. D, consider the extension of H eight technologies abatement, and two-zero-two-zero-three-zero-eight-zero-zero-one, through December thirty-first of twenty-twenty-two.
Yeah, so this was an abatement we passed, I believe, in twenty-twenty for HH Technologies, they were doing a big expansion out there in Bremen. As anybody knows, during this pandemic, it has been extremely difficult to get labor and materials. And so they just fell behind a little bit on their building schedule. No more money or anything, nothing's changing, it's just a timeline as long as for the, excuse me, to allow those materials and that work to get done within a given period, so.
Make most we approve item D.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passed.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate you.
E, resolution twenty-twenty-two dash thirty-four, secure financing for capital improvements at the Covin Regional Airport.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, this is a resolution just directing me to work with Wesley Moore, the city clerk, to secure options for financing for the hangar project, it's a hundred-foot-by-hundred-foot hangar, the land purchase of the two properties that we've discussed in the past few meetings, and then other potential capital projects. At that point, once we get the financing options, we would come back to the commission for approval, for final approval. But this is, this mirrors the resolution passed by the city where they directed the city clerk to work with me to do that. So we just wanted to have that on both sides.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to motion approve item E.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passed. L, discuss ACA's legislation report for twenty-twenty-two regular session.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, this is just an update from the legislative session, it's coming to a close. And there've been a few bills that are not on this update that have passed in the past in just the last couple of days. The House of Representatives has approved a bill, House Bill three-seventy-one, to expand county tax lien options. The way we're doing them here in Coleman County streamlines the process, protects the property owner, and just makes it a more simplified process. And so they've expanded online option, auctions here, and we've opted to, to participate in that. Not every county has, but Coleman County has. The Senate Committee approved a bill helping address national mental health crisis in county jails. The Senate Judiciary Committee, uh, last week approved House Bill seventy, that the House had approved, now it's moved to the Senate. The Judiciary Committee has approved it, it's moving forward, which would be a positive step in addressing the growing number of individuals who are suffering from mental health that are incarcerated in our county jails. That becomes a drain on county budgets, but more importantly, it's not the appropriate care for people with mental health. So they're moving forward with that deal. The permitless concealed carry bill passed, as everyone's aware. And so that, that will change the way things are done at the law enforcement level as well as the county government level. But that's probably one of the most major bills that's passed this session. So Commissioner Marchman is the legislative delegate from the commission, I don't know if you want to add anything to that, Commissioner.
Well, the only, the only thing is, is a lot of things that people don't see that we talk about on a regular basis, like we were talking about earlier. You know, there was a, there was a bill that was announced to up the weight limit for loggers on, and I'm not against loggers hauling as much as they can, but if they do that, it's detrimental to our road system, which is something that we fight every day. So, you know, a lot of these things that people don't see that, that we as a commission, you know, have to fight for or against on a regular basis during the legislative time frame and it's, uh, but I appreciate it, I appreciate the work you did, John.
Yes, sir, there's no action to be taken on this, this is just an update.
Make most we approve, uh, item F.
Chairman, I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passed. I want to say thank, thank you, John, for all you do. G, authorize the chairman and county attorney to sign the federal F one twenty-twenty-two certificates and insurance for FTA assistance programs.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, this has to do with our public transportation agency, Joyce could not be here tonight. But this is our annual certification that we have to sign. The federal transportation agency just has assigned this documentation to participate in their assurance program for the federal.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to motion approve item G.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passed. H, authorize a commission to appoint Mr. James Golden to Covin County three-ten board to expire in twenty-twenty-three to fill the open position due to the death of Ms. Peggy Day.
Regret, regrets to the family, I hate to hear that.
Yes, I do too.
But yeah, I make a motion we approve item H.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, passed. I, authorize the chairman to sign lease agreement for the town of Dodge City for office space used by the probate and revenue offices.
This is a renewal of the lease that we have in place, if you remember, uh, last year we increased that to a hundred dollars a month for the, the rent.
Yes.
This continues that same price and keeps the terms the same.
It's pretty cheap renting.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to motion approve item I.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passed. J, authorize agreement to accept ELC detention and mitigation grant for Covin County Correctional Facility, three of Alabama Department of Public Health in the amount of five-hundred-and-thirty-two forty-nine, and authorize the chairman to sign all the documents.
This is a hundred percent grant and, um, this is, it's subject to applicable rules still, but they will be using this for several upgrades in the jail due to COVID and just distancing. And the, the major purchase for this will be a, uh, contactless scanner. When people come into the jail, they'll be able to go through that.
Make most we approve item J.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passed. K, consider approval of engineering service contract pending any changes by Aldott for Aldott pavement maintenance project at the Covin Regional Airport.
This is, um, Aldott is currently reviewing the engineer's report from GNC, who, they do all the engineering work out at the airport. This is a resurfacing of pavement maintenance by the T-hangers that is necessary work to keep the pavement, to extend the life of the pavement.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to motion approve item.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passed. L, consider approval of lease agreement with Enterprise for five twenty-twenty-two Ford F one-fifties, XL four-by-four super critical cove for the water department, the amount of thirty-five six sixty-four each.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this is similar to the agreement we signed on the road department back in November. Brad Walton has agreed the specs and the price and everything, it will all be built for the water department.
When, when are they supposed to arrive?
Don't tell anybody, but April first.
Yeah, yeah, maybe, keep your fingers crossed, that's right. That's right. And, and, and this is actually saving us money over purchasing equipment.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, a lot of money, appreciate it. Yep, uh, make motion we approve item L.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passed. M, consider a one-year contract with Ameritech for managed print service for the revenue office in the amount of four-hundred-and-twenty-three fifty quarterly, and authorize the chairman to sign.
Commissioner Willam here earlier and spoke on that case, that's just a dollar difference, subject to the same or something like that.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I'll make a motion we approve item.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passed. N, consider a amended county employee handbook to allow new employees to have access to off sick and vacation time as it is earned during, during any probationary periods.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, um, our current handbook has stipulations in the vacation section and the sick leave section that says that our probationary employee will earn annual leave or sick leave, um, during their probationary period, but they can't take it until after they become a classified employee at the end of six months. And we suspended that, or you guys elected to suspend that practice at the beginning of COVID, if you remember, when, you know, we were starting to have so many people out and new employees didn't have access to their earned vacation and sick time. So we suspended it at that time and we kept it like that through this pandemic. And what we'd like to do now is just totally do away with that clause in the sick leave and the annual leave section of the handbook and allow our new employees, when they come onboard, they're earning this time and accruing this time, just letting them have access to it if they need to be off during their first six months of probationary period. We'd like to make that change effective immediately and then we'll update it in the handbook when we do the update at the end of the year.
I feel like that's a good move, too, Judy, I'll make a motion we approve item N.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passed. O, consider extension of annual leave carryover for June the third, twenty-twenty-two, for employees for more than four-hundred-and-eighty hours.
Yes, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, it seems like we're never gonna get over the effects of, of this pandemic. Uh, this, this is the second time we've had to, um, make an extension to our annual leave cutoff. Our, our existing policy says that if, um, if you have over four-hundred-and-eighty hours of accrued vacation leave at the end of the year, it's forfeited. Well, year before, well, in twenty-twenty, um, we had so many employees that were out that, um, other employees would have to fill in for them, so they weren't able to take all their vacations. So we did an extension, um, to like, I think it was February of twenty-twenty-one, and then we extended it to June of twenty-twenty-one. So this year, we're in the same boat. We had thought we would get a preemptive strike on this and back in September, if you'll remember, you guys voted to extend the deadline for the twenty-twenty-one vacation to the end of February. You know, the, we, we kind of thought that the pandemic was winding down then. But then the, um, the new variant hit and we had a lot of employees that were out at the end of last year and at the first of this year. So we've got several employees that have, have just had to fill in for other employees and have not been able to, um, take their, um, extra vacation time. And so what we'd like to do is, um, have you guys consider extending that to June the third of twenty-twenty-two? It's the, it's the exact same timeframe that we did when we extended it last year so that employees could, um, have that extra time to take their earned vacation time and not lose it.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to approve item O.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passed. Judy, we want to thank you for all you do, you're amazing. CCP amend item M for February fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two, meaning to reflect the purchase of a twenty-twenty-two John Deere three-twenty-five G compact tractor, track loader to comply with American provision for Stanley Lonsom OHV party at the cost of sixty-five thousand eight sixty-eight thirteen.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, first of all, apologize, this is the third item we've brought to you on this exact topic. The problem has been, we've not been able to find anything that's by American provision, just because it says John Deere, I mean, it's by American. So we have now identified this piece that will pass that provision. It's for a grant for Stanley Lonsom, uh, through Brad's office, and it is a bid through Sourcewell.
Glad to see you. Make motion we approve item P.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passed. Q, proposed plant per cell subdivision, a minor subdivision containing three lots located off of County Road seventeen twenty-five and County Road seventeen twenty-one.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, per review from, uh, by the engineering staff, this plant, preliminary plant does meet current subdivision regulations and I do recommend approval of this plant.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to motion approve item Q.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passed. R, bid number thirteen seventy-six, award bid for project CCP twenty-two dash twenty-six dash twenty-two to Wiregrass in the amount of three million seven hundred and seventy dollars to be paid from fund two ninety-eight.
I guess, Mr. Chairman, I'm very pleased with the results that we've received on these bids. Been in constant contact with these, uh, contractors and trying to provide them with information on what to be expected on these bids and I do recommend approval of this bid.
Brian, you might explain to what this bid is.
Oh, yes, this is a, this one will be the bid for the full dub reclamation of roadlet processing with the added base material with a KGG service trigger.
Make most, yeah, make most we approve item R, I know there's a lot of people that, you know, that, you know, when you throw that number out there.
Yeah, and there's about thirty miles, approximately thirty miles of roads in this to be resurfaced, rebase to resurface.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passed. AS, bid number thirteen seventy-seven, award bid for project CCP twenty-two dash twenty-seven dash twenty-two to Whitaker in the amount of two million four hundred and forty-five five eighty-eight twenty-five to be paid from fund two ninety-eight.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this bid will consist of a scrub seal and a hot mix of leveling wearing layer. And also I'd like to point out that we have already tentatively scheduled a pre-time with both contractors on both of these next week. Once we have these approved, I will confirm that with those contractors. Also, we will be having a supervisors meeting with their supervisors tomorrow. So we're trying to hit the ground running on this as soon as possible and hopefully have this, start having this executed. So now the real work begins, I definitely approve the, approve this award, this bid.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to motion approve item N.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passed. I want to commend you, Brian, for all the hard work you've done, hopefully we'll get some roads paved.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna be able to.
Get some roads paved.
If everything works out, we're gonna be able to do more than we've ever done. If everything works out, we're going to be able to do more than we've ever done, and we're spending more money than we've ever spent, so that's a, that's a positive thing.
We want to thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, to add on to that, this is, the Fund 298 is the American Rescue Plan money that we're able to set aside and use for general government services.
So this didn't come directly out of our general fund like we normally have to do, so that's a plus. Our grant isn't likely paid for it, but that's, hopefully, hopefully we're using it smart.
T, Bid Number 1378, award bid for Guard Rail to Alabama Guard Rail.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we are very satisfied with some of the numbers that we've got back on this bid, and I do recommend approval of this bid.
Make motion, we approve item T.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. U, Bid Number 1379, award bid for Poly Pipe to Add Code Pipe and Supply LLC and Bar Concrete Products Incorporated. Purchase will be based on vicinity and availability of materials.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, on several of these bids, we are awarding multiple bids because, again, because of the supply chain issues that's been, that we had in the past, and this will give us more options. And while we have very good numbers on these, so I do recommend approval of this bid.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to motion through item U.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. V, Bid Number 1380, award bid for Bitrus Must Plant Mix installed to Whittaker, and Wiregrass purchase will be based on vicinity, availability, and materials.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I do recommend approval of this bid.
Make motion, we approve item V.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. W, Bid Number 1381, award bid for Herbicides and Adjust Vance to Site One, and Alena Chemical purchase will be based on vicinity and availability of material.
Mr. Chairman, I do, do recommend approval of this bid as well.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to motion through item W.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. X, Bid Number 1382, award bid for Bitrus Must Plant Mix Material Only to Wiregrass.
Mr. Chairman, again, I do recommend approval of this bid as well.
So make motion, we approve item X.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. Y, Bid Number 1384, award to Pyro Show of Alabama Incorporated for the Fourth of July fireworks display in the amount of $32,000.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, Doug Davenport asked me to speak on this. He was unable to be here, but this is the annual bid for the fireworks show. In the last meeting, the commission raised that to the $32,000 mark, and so the show was set by that, by that budget, and he recommends making this award.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to motion through item Y.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. Z, Bid Number 1384, award bid for Five Midsize Police Pursuit SUVs for the Sheriff's Office to Stivers in the amount of $42,505.99 each.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, this is a little different than our normal process. These vehicles were not available on state bid because of supply chain issues, so we had to bid that out independently, and they'll be using some of the money from the COVID funds that the commission awarded them.
Yes.
So another reason we had to, had to bid this out this way, and they do recommend awarding this.
Make motion, we approve item Z.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. Double A, Bid Number 1386, award bid for Reforcing Steel to Opal Machine and Supply Company.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this bid and as well as the next bid will cover all of the steel for, for the bridges, three of them we have completely out and one is in limited capacity. And as you know, we've been seeking some grants that we will announce at a later date, and with the cost that we've got on this, from our estimation, we should be able to cover all four of those bridges based on all these bids. I do recommend approval of this bid.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to motion through item A.
I'll second that motion. Yeah, metal's going up every day, so if we can lock in a price, you're right.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. B B, Bid Number 1387, award bid for Structural Steel to Opal Machine and Supply Company.
Mr. Chairman, I do recommend approval of this bid as well.
Make motion, we approve item double B.
Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, pass. Number six, the next, the next commission work session will be Tuesday, April 19, 2022, at 4:00 PM in the commission meeting room. Seven, the next commission meeting will be Tuesday, April 19, 2022, 6:00 PM in the commission meeting room. Number eight, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to motion to adjourn.
I'll second that motion.
Meeting adjourned.